Welcome. It's five o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting to order with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. McMillan.
Please face the flag and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looking for elected officials. I believe I saw Randy Smith come in. Randy? Are there any others out there that I've overlooked? Thank you, Commissioner Smith. We appreciate your attendance here. Just a couple of brief announcements. Knox County Schools, including Central Office, will be closed Monday, November 21st through 23rd for the Thanksgiving holidays. We hope everyone has a chance to rest up and not eat too much and come back ready to charge into the Christmas holidays. Also, the Joint Education Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, November 28th, at four o'clock in the Andrew Johnson Building Boardroom. This is an open meeting and everyone is welcome to attend and listen up to what our two governing bodies are talking about. Board, is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, move for approval?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Norman and Horn, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We've got some special recognitions tonight that we are all very excited about and I'm going to turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Reward status is the top distinction a school can earn in Tennessee. Reward schools are those that are improving overall in student academic achievement and student growth for all students and for all student groups. In 2018, 318 schools in 85 school districts, about 20% of the schools in the state earned a reward designation. We're very proud to share that 14 of those schools are Knox County Schools and represent every single board member district. Administrators and staff members from each school are here with us this evening. I've asked Dr. Ryswick to announce the schools by district and introduce the principal. He will also hand them their reward school banner provided by the Tennessee Department of Education as they come forward to be recognized. Also, we will... The banners are different, obviously, because of the schools, but we would like to unfold one of the banners to show everyone what those banners look like and would like for Board Chair and the district board representative to join us for each of the schools as the principals receive their certificate.
I had just asked to have one of those opened up just so that everyone could see what they look like. I know, principals, that you're going to display these banners proudly in your schools. All right, Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We... Principals, if you would, when you come forward within your staff as well, if you would just come by, there'll be a certificate that the board member and the superintendent will have for your picture and on your way down, if you'd stop by, we'll give you your banner to take back. So, thank you very much. From the first district, our first school is the LNN STEM Academy, Principal Ms. Becky Ash. From the second district, we have Shandale Elementary School with Principal Ms. April Parton. From District Three, Bearden High School, Principal Mr. Jason Myers. From District Four, Sequoia Elementary School, with Alicia Hin. Next, from District Five, AL Lots Elementary School, Principal Melinda Russell. Also, from District Five, Fairgate High School, Principal Mr. Ryan Seabee. From District Five, Fairgate Intermediate School, Principal Debbie Adirante. Next, from District Six, Ball Camp Elementary School, Ms. Sarah Bringle, Principal. From District Six, Harden Valley Academy, Principal Ms. Lee Reynolds. From District Six, Pleasant Ridge Elementary School, Principal Ms. Sandy Roach. Next, we'll move to District Seven, Powell Middle School, Dr. Beth Howard, Principal. From District Eight, Gibbs Elementary School, Principal Mr. Joe Cameron. Next, we move to District Nine, Gap Creek Elementary School, Ms. Lisa White, Principal. And our 14th and final reward school for this year, from District Nine, Mount Olive Elementary School, Principal Dr. Casey Cutter.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick, and it was just pointed out to me that I think this is the first year that every district has had at least one reward school. That's pretty exciting. And I put a friendly challenge out to my vice chair next year. We tied this year, next year. There's gotta be some advantage to having more schools in your district than anybody else. Thank you. A little friendly, thank you. All right, moving on, we've got some more recognitions. Chief Padukas, if you'd come forward, please.
Good evening and thank you for giving us just a couple of minutes this evening, but several years ago, we instituted an employee recognition program and so as part of that recognition, it includes a recognition of a school security officer of the year. And I guess we've done this now for five years, but the last two years, we have recognized two officers as the school's security officers of the year. And it's not that we're being indecisive, it simply means that we are... We have so many wonderful employees that we want to recognize. And so, this year, the two officers that are being recognized are David Cup and Stephen Davis. And as part of that, they'll get a plaque and they'll get a uniform pin that signifies their officer of the year status. Thank you.
Our next recognition of the year is going to be... Well, it's going to be Sidney, but I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent to make a more formal introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The finalists for the 2018-19 Tennessee Principal of the Year Award represents each center of regional excellence or core region in the state. This award is given annually to a school leader for outstanding service in education and exceptional leadership that drives overall improvements in his or her school. To qualify, candidates must have a minimum of three years' experience as a principal and a minimum of five years' experience in Tennessee public schools. In addition, they must have a proven record, track record of exceptional gains in student learning. I'm extremely proud to join you as we recognize our own Sunnyview Primary School Principal, Sidney Upton, the Principal of the Year for the East Tennessee Core Region. Our next recognition is for the East Tennessee Core Region Teacher of the Year. In addition to Principal of the Year, Tennessee Department of Education also recognizes teacher of the year finalists representing the nine core areas in the state. Earning this award gives these finalists opportunity to serve on the Education Commissioners' Teacher Advisory Council. To qualify, candidates must have been teaching full-time for at least three years and have a proven record of gains in student learning and be effective school and community leaders. Our LNN STEM Academy Science Teacher, Brian Schultz, is the Teacher of the Year for the East Tennessee Region. I'm honored to join the board as we recognize East Tennessee Core Teacher of the Year, Brian Schultz.
Well, I have written down here to tell everyone they can leave after the announcements, but I didn't even have to say that. And we'll begin with our formal agenda.
Item nine, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Norman and Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item ten A, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A100, School District School Board legal status and authority as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh, motion. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Well, that's true. Thank you. That's Norman and Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ten B, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A110, School District planning goals and objectives as amended.
So moved.
Norman and Owen, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Ten C, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy A140, School Day as amended.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. That would be Norman and Horn. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen suggested that this might... It might be beneficial to move this to collaborative conferencing in our workshop and so I think that's what I'm proposing to, or should we discuss that? So, I'm just opening it up to the board.
Are there any other comments on this recommendation? Mr. Norman, are you wanting to amend the original motion?
I'll just leave the motion as is for the time being.
We need to... Do we need a substitute motion to do that, though, right? I'll make a substitute motion to put this off until we've had a chance to hear from the collaborative conferencing team.
Okay, I'll second.
Substitute motion by Owen, second by Norman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item ten D, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B110, method of election of officers as amended.
So moved.
Approved by Norman and Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ten E, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B162, agenda as amended.
So moved.
Norman and Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ten F, approve first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education Policy D231, bids and quotations.
So moved.
Norman and Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item ten G, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy E121, testing of drinking water for contamination.
So moved.
Norman and Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ten H, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I330, senior classification as amended.
So moved.
Norman and Owen, discussion? Motion to approve? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Ten I, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education Policy I341, uniform grading policy.
So moved.
Norman and Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item ten J, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I381, integration of TCAP and EOC scores and student grades as amended.
So moved.
Norman and Owen, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Item 11A, approve education innovation and research grant from the U.S. Department of Education in the amount of $2,405,543 with required matching funds of $416,672 covered by pre-existing budgeted salaries, benefits, and occupancy for the term of October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2023 for Think About It: Systematically Preparing Students for the Workplace Proposal.
So moved.
Motion by Norman, second by Horn, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
11B, approve Tennessee Arts Commission student ticket subsidy grants for various Knox County Schools in the amount of $43,806 designated for tickets and transportation to arts events.
So moved. Second.
Owen and Norman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
11C, approve school bus seat restraint grant from the Tennessee Department of Education in the amount of $20,000 designated for contractor reimbursements.
So moved.
Norman and Horn, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
11D, approve funding agreement and Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant in the amount of $15,510 designated to purchase of 11 Zoll automated external defibrillators and accessories.
So moved.
Motion by Norman and Bab, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
11E, approve memorandum of understanding with the University of Tennessee for the Get Proved Project and receipt of $2,000 grand award for each participating school during the 2018-2019 school year.
So moved.
Norman and Horn, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
11F, approve Tennessee Math Teachers Association 2018 Connex Grant in the amount of $1,000 for Austin East High School designated for purchase of Connex kit and Cube Storage Self Organization system.
So moved. Second.
Madam?
Motion by Satterfield, second by Norman, is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Can we have the teacher Tabitha Rainwater come?
Yes, please come forward.
Yes. Do you have a question?
Oh, I just kinda wanna understand a little bit about the grant and just what Oh, I just kind of, kind of want to understand a little bit about the grant and just whatever you like to say to the board before we approve it, if we approve it.
Okay. The grant is for an 8,000-piece Connects set in order to teach mathematics manipulatively for algebra, geometry, algebra II, bridge math. In your hands, you can understand math, you can do math. I'm excited for the students of Austin East.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item eleven G, approve Northrop Grumman Corporation Grant in the amount of $750 for Farragut High School designated for the robotics program.
Second.
Horne and Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Eleven H, approve Radio Systems Corporation Grant in the amount of $2,000 for Farragut High School designated for the robotics program.
Second.
Horne and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Eleven I, approve Oak Ridge Associated University's Extreme Classroom Makeover Grant in the amount of $5,000 for Karnes High School designated to classroom technology.
So moved.
Second.
Hill and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Eleven J, approve General Equipment Release and Agreement and Planet Fitness Grant for Northwest Middle School to create a mini judgment-free zone to include equipment valued up to $20,000 plus $34,109.48 in construction costs.
Approved, motion?
Second.
Hill and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Item K, approve Growing Minds Farm to School Grant in the amount of $100 for South Knoxville Elementary School designated to gardening efforts.
Second.
Christie and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Eleven L, approve Acceptance of Donations from the Town of Farragut in the total amount of $66,000 designated for Farragut Middle, Farragut Intermediate, and Farragut Primary Schools.
Second.
Horne and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Eleven M, approve donation of Pole Vault Pit Value Pack valued at $15,400 from the Farragut High School Track Booster Club for the Farragut High School Track Program.
Second.
Horne and Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item twelve A, approve contract with Gallagher and Associates Incorporated to provide wireless clock services for the term of November 2018 through October 2019, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Norman and Horne, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Twelve B, approve contracts with CM Henley Company LLC doing business as Rackley Company East Tennessee and Skilled Services LLC to provide guttering and aluminum walkway covers for the term of November 2018 through October 2019, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Moved by Norman and Horne, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twelve C, approve renewal of contract with the University of Tennessee for provision of cultural competency training at an annual cost of approximately $170,000 for the term of January 1 through December 31, 2019.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
That would be Satterfield and Bab, discussion?
Madam Chair, we have two people signed up for public forum on this issue, on this item. The first one is Andre Canty. Can we have five minutes on the clock, please? Thank you. Please state your name and county of residence.
Yeah, county of residence?
Yes.
Okay, yes, it's Andre Canty in Knox County, District One. My words will probably be a little jumbled, I don't really feel the best right now. Also don't have my face on, as some of my aunts would say, but I'll be pretty quick. Just to speak about the importance of cultural competency and the support is not to, not only to Knox County schools, but across the country. We all know the problem is that black students, Latino students, students with disabilities have been disproportionately suspended, arrested, expelled, more than anybody else. It is an ongoing problem all across the country, and there's been, there's been this talk, and I believe that as well, that we want our kids to compete with students not only across Tennessee, but across the globe. But to do that is to ensure that every kid has the right to education, and therefore every kid has the right to be there. Cultural competency is, is a tool, not a, not something to demonize teachers, to demonize administrators, to demonize the entire system, it's meant to help. Of course, there's conversations that are uncomfortable, right? But it works, we have to get our, out of our comfort zone. There are students and parents whose everyday lives are uncomfortable through, through just working every day, through oppression, they're dealing with a lot more things than having uncomfortable conversations. Because they're getting suspended and criminalized, but cultural competency is a way out of that. It's not the ultimate pathway, but it's a step towards that. Because I would hope, and I think that every single person on this board wants to reduce the disparities, as everybody else behind me. Cultural competency was primarily birthed out of a grassroots movement. There's a teaching that myself and a couple of other people did a couple of years ago, and the people most affected, parents, teachers, students, all said cultural competency is a way out. The people said it, not me. And the course of the task force that I was a part of, and the implementation committee that I'm a part of now, of course, I'm speaking for myself, is in the three, five-year plan to reduce the disparities. So I just implore you to keep this contract because it's new. What was not new is disparities. And again, to ensure that every single student has the right to education, they need to be there. Because these disparities lead to a couple of things. It reduces the likelihood of them getting a diploma, and a job, and a pathway to college. It increases their chance of going to jail into the system. We don't want that. And again, it's not this kumbaya kind of thing, it's just ensuring that we all have our implicit bias, and it must be dealt with. It's not just race, it's race, it's class, it's gender, sexual orientation, it's gender expression, we all have our biases that was put into us when we were born, through media, through tradition, through religion, that's the stuff that we have to unwire. And there's nothing wrong with that, there's nothing wrong with the question that, we all have our, have our biases. And if conversations are uncomfortable, then again, look at, at the realities of the people you serve, and the kids that go to school every day. They're uncomfortable, and they have to face realities that it's hard to put in words. But to make sure these kids are okay, this training needs to, needs to continue, it needs to be fully funded, it need to be supported. If there's any other tweaks, I'm always willing to help. I've done some cultural competency training for Knoxville Police Department, and you talk about uncomfortable situations, KPD, right? But they're willing to implement those. So KP, KPD is doing it well, they're willing to work, I hope you all want to work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And our second speaker is Todd Shelton. Mr. Shelton, if you could state your name and county of residence, please.
Todd Shelton, 3111, Bolster Lane, Knox County.
Thank you.
I have sent my thoughts to the board members, so I don't plan to use up the whole time. I really appreciate everything that Andre said. I had a lot of training and exposure to cultural competency type stuff, you know, 15, 20 years ago. And I had the advantage of, of getting it on the weekends, so we had like two full, solid days to really get immersed, because it's such, it's an uncomfortable experience. I was raised in middle Tennessee, I'm white, I came up and I had great parents, but we all have our biases, and I saw those where I lived. Didn't do a whole lot about them, didn't understand them, but as I grew older, I felt like there was something sort of amiss. It was my exposure to anti-racism training, and then, which always included cultural competency and the ideas around it, which is, has us think of the other people that, that we don't really have reason to think very deeply about, people that maybe we, we don't live around a lot. And it also made us examine ourselves, and that was uncomfortable. Uncomfortable is okay. Right now in this country, we're terribly polarized, and I happen to believe that people that are on the track to try to talk to other people who are different, and try to understand their perspective is going to be the only way out for us. For our kids to get a chance, and the teachers to get a chance to experience that, it is not just for the kids that stop-school push-out is concerned about, and Andre, it makes a better person out of every person in this school system if they'll just stay with it. It just can't help it. The uncomfortableness is there, and I wish that we had more funds so that, and the school schedule's difficult, so that the teachers got a more frequent exposure to it, and they had a chance to express the things that they're uncomfortable about, anybody, because that's what you have to do. You have to sort of search, and, and it's really nice to do it with other people, and it's nice to do it with other people different than you. So I am very much in favor of this, we worked hard to get it, you know, established. If we get more money, maybe we can speed it up, so people get a more frequent contact with it, and that will help. But I'm very much for us going forward, it's too, it's too soon to think otherwise. So thank y'all very much for your consideration.
Thank you. That concludes public forum on this item, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, this indeed is a difficult topic for me. You know, being, being somebody that's been involved in the schools here in Knox County since 1978, just had a tremendous amount of exposure all through the system, and in the political, and the administrative functions, and so on. My first, my, you know, and I've, I've had this sort of skeptical view about, about the program from the beginning, and that may be an indication of my bias right there, but, but, but my experience in the system has been so dramatic in terms of never experiencing anything from teachers especially, other than their desire to help and to work with and, and provide extra time, extra effort for any kid and every kid, that sort of is the, the least of these, okay? So if that is so, and, and here we, here we are as a board, we're trustees for this massive budget, but we're, you know, there's, there's, there's X amount of money to spend. When I think of disparities now, and, and think of things that we should definitely be focused on, and, and would be my desire with the most money that we could absolutely get up, it would be in the area of literacy. So when I, when I consider this as $170,000 per year for this program, I see very worthy things within the program. I see, there was a lot of good stuff that came from, especially from the task force, mentoring, character education, et cetera, those are undoubtedly good things. But then I go, well, you know, we've got high-poverty schools in our system where 90% of the kids can't read at third grade level, and we could expand that throughout the system. There's, there's poor kids everywhere, and so that's, to me, that's a life sentence. They're, they're, they're somewhat doomed to, some, some form of illiteracy for their whole life. And so, to me, I, I just don't feel, I don't feel like the best use of the funds in this case devoted to this program over doing everything we can at grain, green magnet. All these schools, Westview, where they're suffering in terms of literacy, I'm, I'm very skeptical. Now, that, I mean, I don't know what I'm going to do as far as voting right now, I want to hear other people. But there, there, there are, there are questions within, you know, when we go through, and, and everybody's read, probably in the room, have read the, the emails that we've received, some very positive, the ratings that we received, a little bit of a mixed bag, but, but generally positive, and comments and so on. There's questions within those that are, that are, that need to be addressed by the people that are running the program, and certainly, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring those up regardless of the vote. If this goes forward, it goes forward. But there's certainly some, there's some places within the program where we've got repeated omissions, or some, you know, some failure to address. So I'm just gonna, that's enough for me for right now, I'm gonna let the other people speak. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Ms. Bowns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Tony said, many of you know, I had my reservations about this program from the beginning. I voted yes after the board agreed to evaluate and renew this program on an annual basis. I hoped it would give me time to attend some of the trainings, listen to the teachers and administrators, and see how, and hear how it was being implemented. After reading through UT's proposal, I was assured that this was only a template that would be modified for the needs of Knox County. And while that may or may not have been done, what we cannot modify is the way someone presents the material. And this presents some problems as we tried to implement it across Knox County, I feel. I know many of you board members received emails, and I would like to read from just one that I received. The training that I personally sat through consisted of research that was poorly conducted, with the instructor telling us to disregard the faults we found in the research and to only focus on the outcome. That was shocking. One instructor even used a television show claiming research value. With regard to the implicit bias aspect of this training, it was disturbing to see just how much of it was biased. So, end quote. It is my job as a board member to reflect the views of my district, and in addition, as Mr. Norman said, our budget is tight, and this year's budget is going to be even more challenging, and I believe this money can better be spent on initiatives to improve student learning. Lastly, in closing, I'd like to say that the opposite of competent is incompetent, and the definition for incompetent is not having or showing the necessary skills to do something successfully. And I believe we have inadvertently conveyed the message to Knox County school teachers and administrators that you are culturally incompetent, and for these reasons, I will not be voting to. And for these reasons, I will not be voting to renew this contract for another year.
Thank you, Ms. Bowns. Ms. Owens?
I think I'm gonna pick up where Ms. Bowns left off with the language that we used of being competent or incompetent. In the words cultural competency, we've failed to look at the culture of a school system and the culture of education. Because when you go into an educational situation, saying that you are going to teach someone to be competent, there's an assumption there that you're teaching them something that they are incompetent in. So I think our failure there is not in presenting the information, but in the semantics. Had we called it cultural sensitivity or cultural responsiveness and addressed it that way, I think we might have had much less of the backlash that we have had. I would like to point out that most of the emails that we have gotten have been from one school and one grade level. And I, I think the administration might want to look at what else could be going on there besides just this training. Because while it was addressed to this training, as we read through those, it's really looking at the whole discipline culture in that particular school. So I'm not sure that it is really about the cultural competency training because of that, because I haven't had those negative emails from anywhere else. Looking at the survey results, elementary teachers scored at four point five, but our middle and high school teachers were three point nine and three point seven respectively. So that makes me curious about whether the instruction was different in those or if it was received differently. So whether it is a content problem or an instruction problem. When we're talking about what other things we could do with the funds in elementary schools specifically, it's the elementary teachers who have rated it the highest. So I, I think it would be a poor choice for us to remove it when the teachers are rating it very high. Four point five is, that's huge compared to how we usually rate things. So I think looking at those overall ratings, we need to consider why we have such a difference in response. And I think we need to have more attention paid to how the instruction is actually being done before we can make a decision to remove something that our, our teachers are asking for and something that we promised the Disparities in Education Outcome Committee we would implement. So that is something I think we should consider strongly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as we have learned, I think we're learning more all the time about, about adverse childhood experiences. And I'm wondering if, and I, I think even the comments made by both speakers in public forum talked, the, the things that they spoke about would be addressed with adverse childhood experience training. So I'm, I recognize that the task force spent a lot of time studying this, but I wonder if we, if we're kind of missing the underlying issues by looking at, if we were focusing on that training versus calling it cultural competency and including, I think it would include probably two-thirds of our students have some sort of adverse childhood experience and you are addressing needs of students. And I, you know, back to the point that, that Mr. Norman and Ms. Bowns made, I think we have empathetic teachers who try to meet their students individually where they are. And I think that the training that they probably need that would be helpful and beneficial in that may be ACE training. I have heard from more teachers on this subject this school year than any other subject that we've, that we've had, on any other item that we've had so far this school year. And I've heard, I, I have read the comments from teachers and there are positive comments and I know some teachers found things that they can take back to their classroom, but there are also a lot of negative comments. And I think that the point has been made by a couple of people and I concur, that a lot of that goes back to the way it was presented in sessions. And I think that a lot of it focused probably, there was, I think there was, and I attended the session, so I was there for, for one day of it. I think there was a lot of personal opinion that was included that, that contributes to the negative comments. If I heard correctly last week, the, and the other, the other point that I'll move to is the fiscal responsibility that Mr. Norman also pointed out. We are responsible for looking at this budget. We all know that we're going to have a budget in the spring that is going to be a challenge. We have to look at every single budget item that we have, budget line item in the budget and look at specifically items like this that are a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. This is over five years, just under nine hundred thousand dollars. That's a significant amount of money. We all know how many mass, the massive amount of needs that we have in each school. We could all spend that money in two seconds. So it behooves us to look at how we are, how we are spending money. Are we spending it in the right way? And I'm, if I heard correctly last week, part of this money, once the training is finished in April, will go to UT hiring an employee who will deal with issues that come up in our schools that they will counsel our teachers on. And I'm not sure if I'm remembering that correctly, so please correct me, Ms. Massey, if I'm wrong. But I, I think we have very competent teachers and counselors in our schools. We ought to be giving them guidance on these issues and we, that we ought to be as Knox County schools, helping our, our teachers if they have an issue. I'm not sure that, I'm comfortable with, with a third party telling our teachers how to handle a situation because that person may have different values than, than that school community. So for all of these reasons, I will not be supporting the renewal of this contract. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Ms. Bab, I believe you were next.
Yes, and I also got both sides of the story from teachers' comments and appreciated hearing from both sides. And what I really appreciated today was getting all of the comments from the different schools and the individual, you could actually see every single teacher ranking. And, and from that, what I saw was, I think there are things that need to be changed. I mean, an overriding comment I saw was, I think, a full day was too much. I mean, there was overload. And, you know, personally, I went through a training for my work yesterday and after a day, you're kind of overloaded. And so I felt like there were definite learning points to get from the comments, but what I took away from it, when I looked through the comments, was overwhelmingly positive from teachers. I saw high marks, they were the occasional ones, but they seemed to be more outliers than, than the fours and fives going forward. And the comments also, and I, and what I hope that can go forward, I, I will be voting to support this, is that we look at the comments because you could see, there were certain instructors that were very well thought of, I thought, and consistently through the comments and across different schools, very thought of. And then there were ones that, not so much so. So I think there is the opportunity, from what we have done in the past, to tweak this, to make it better, whether it's changing even the name of it, you know, to make it a different name, but I, I personally support that we move forward with this.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you. From the conversations that I've had with teachers and specifically the principals of District One, everyone pretty much had the same, along with the comments, it's needed in, in, in their schools. The issue that they had was with implementation. And I, I think that goes from what everyone has said so far with the, certain presenters not implementing in the, in the way that they wanted to be received. A lot of the feedback was, was that it was very polarized. However, they, they hundred percent said we need to keep this and give it another try and to see how the, the, the next shift of Phase Two, see what that looks like, because I know that Phase Two is supposed to be different from Phase One. And so my principals in District One specifically said that they need it. And if I want to bring back to your memory, at the last meeting where Houston Middle School came and spoke and was begging to keep, basically begging to keep it because it is needed for their schools. If you remember, Houston has been drastically changed this past, this school year with the new demographic and their teachers are at bare wits right now on needing those tools and that support. And so they felt that this training is given and the tools, then they asked for more tools as well. And so I do see Houston really benefiting from Phase Two. And I hope that we can continue to keep it because just speaking District specifically, we can't let Houston become a revolving door of teachers coming in and out because they do not have the tools that they need. And so that school specifically asked to keep it along with the District, my principals in District One. So I will be supporting and we'll look to see that changes are implemented from the feedback that's provided, that UT does implement those changes to make it better in a sense.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It may very well be, listening to the comments here and, and the emails that we've received, it could very well be that, as you just mentioned, Ms. Satterfield, some of the instructors were, were, were polarizing, some of them may have been more polarizing than others. The session that I attended, and I did not stay all day, but I was not impressed at all. And I guess the time that I was there, the individual that was leading the session, if you had to pick a theme, they, they used, I guess I would look to the theme of, you're biased, you may not think you are, you may argue that you aren't, but I'm gonna prove to you that you are. And, and, and I'm determined to do that, almost to the point of, before I let you out of here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna prove that, which was probably not the best approach, I didn't think. Now, that, that, that may have been one individual. And, you know, I, I, I just have some concerns. I want us to be, you know, to treat everybody equal and, 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 and everybody has the same chance. And I realize that some people have more problems than, than others and, and that has to be dealt with. But, Ms. Massey, did, is, is this, to your knowledge, is this, this type of program to this extent, is, is it going on anywhere else in the, in the state of Tennessee and in the school systems?
Mr. McMillan, I'm not aware of other school districts. I know that there are cultural competency trainees going on in other districts. I don't know the, the magnitude of that, though.
Well, I mean, are, are they, okay. You, you don't know anything about how, how ours compares to the more metropolitan areas in Tennessee or the rural areas or anything? You just, they just have cultural competency training and they, because they say they do? I mean, is that what you're saying?
I, I, I'm just saying, I am, I do know that from talking to other, other districts that they have it incorporated in some of their training. I don't know the specifics around that, however.
Okay, okay. Well, that just kind of makes me think, I mean, back when, when, when I was a social studies teacher, we were, you know, we were given all these things that we're supposed to, to, to cover and everything. And by the way, you're, you're supposed to teach the Constitution at some point, but they didn't tell you what to teach or how to go about it. And I just wonder if, if, if some of the, the, the other school systems are basically just, you know, giving somewhat temporary lip service or something or, but, but that really doesn't have anything to do with, with us. I just wondered out of curiosity. And I'm also wondering, we've gotten quite a few emails, but I'm wondering about people that, teachers and that they just don't really, some of them just don't want to share their views one way or the other. They think it's something that, you know, the board's decided we're gonna do and the best thing I can do is just keep my mouth shut and, and go through it, whether I like it or no matter what I think about it. And, and, and we have no way of knowing about that. It also concerns me that, and it, again, it may be the approach and the, the people that are, that are trying to teach it, is why is it, does it seem to be as it goes up through the grade levels, there, there is less support, I guess you would say, from the teachers? You compare elementary to high school. But anyway, I, I guess, I guess you've, you've answered my question as, as much as, as possible. But I do think that it's, that it's important that, that, that we, even if the program continues, I think it's important that we continue to hear from our teachers. Some of them may change their mind if, if, you know, about it as it goes along. It's just, I guess it's, maybe it's too early for some of them to totally form opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Christie?
Do we know how many teachers or staff members have been through this? I mean, have we had the entire system complete the training?
Mr. Thomas, is that for Ms. Massey?
Yes, Ms. Massey.
Yes, Dr. Coleman King is here and she's actually the lead of the, the UT program, but we've trained about thirty-five hundred teachers. I'm sorry, forty-five hundred teachers, about more, more than half of our schools. We've got two training days left.
And that was one of the concerns that I received from someone today. This was an educator that's looking forward to this training and they have not had it yet. And her, to quote her, she was saying, she doesn't know how the board can have an informed discussion about renewing the training before many of our staff members have even been through it. And she, you know, she expressed that she would be very disappointed if we discontinued it. And, you know, the, receiving the results, the complete results today helped me. It was interesting to read it by schools. And, and most of them were positive. You know, I'm just really hesitant to abandon a program where so many people found it helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. Ms. Bowns?
Yes, thank you. This is for Ms. Massey. I'm glad you're still standing there. You know, I've been in education a long time and what I always see is that we try to do it for everybody across the board. I mean, I saw that so many years in so many programs that were implemented in Knox County schools and they didn't last long, but we employ, you know, if they worked in one school, then we did it across the board. Is there any way, because what I see in the, and from what I've heard, and I've heard comments as Susan has throughout the year, and not just from one school, but from multiple schools, teachers and administrators, is there any way that we can make this? We always love to make things mandatory. Is there any way that we can make it an optional program so that those people that really like a Houston, that want to take advantage of it, can, we can, it can be available to them after we get everybody through this year? I'm just saying in the second year of implementation, can it be an optional program rather than a mandatory? Will we offer it as a district in-service and those that want to come, feel like they need to come, feel like that it will benefit, their school could come, but we don't make it mandatory across the system?
So, thank you, Ms. Bowns. I think that when you look at the fact that it was a recommendation from the Disparities in Education- in Educational Outcomes Task Force, I think that that, that recommendation was made with a lot of research, with a lot of community input. Um, and I, I think that that group felt like it was really vital, that it was a district-wide opportunity so that you really are developing. I, I don't know that it's as much of a, a program as it is about just, um, kind of expanding people's understanding of the diversity of the children that are sitting in the classroom before them so that you have a better understanding of learners. Um, so, you know, I, I think it would be up to the board to determine. They adopted the recommendations of the task force as they were, so I think it would be up to the board if that, if that change was going to be made, that would be a decision for the board to make.
And I think what you said was very key. It's an opportunity, not it's mandated. And I think that's where part of, part of this has come into play. When we start mandating things, it makes it less desirable to some people. So, I don't, that's just a suggestion. The board can look at it at a later date, but, um, I just think it should be an opportunity rather than a mandate.
Thank you. Ms. Owens? Oh, I'm sorry, you're out. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Patty, I think that was a, um, good observation there. But can we have, do you mind if we hear from the contractors? Is there opportunity for that?
Certainly, certainly. Actually, before they speak, if we could just, um, hear from Ms. Horn and, um, and I have a couple of comments to make, which will also include.
Ms. Massey? Ms. Massey? You may not want to leave. I have. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I, I mentioned the ACE training earlier and I know you're doing some ACE training. Can you tell me kind of how much is going on? And I just keep thinking as we're having this discussion that it seems like that would address a lot of the issues. So can you speak to that, please?
So, yes, we actually are, we just completed last week, training seven of our schools. ACE is a, is a, is a portion of trauma-informed schools. Um, so there's a lot of national, um, understanding around the importance of the effects of childhood trauma that has on the children that are sitting in our classroom and quite frankly, every single one of us sitting in this room. So, um, we've trained seven schools. Prior to that, we had two trainers in our district that were district-wide trainers. A couple of folks in, like at Bearden High, had some folks that were trained as well as, I want to think Houston Middle, but I will need to check, fact-check that. Uh, the seven schools that participated each sent between five and eight members of a team. Those folks will go back for a train-to-trainer model and seven of our schools will soon be identified as trauma-informed schools. Our plan is to utilize those, many of those people to do training for all of our schools. If you think about the proposal and the strategic plan and in our Knox Support Initiative, we plan to make sure that all of our schools are trauma-informed. It is kind of the why of the work that we're doing when you look at what we're doing with restorative practice, when you look at what we're doing with positive school supports and honestly, the cultural competency or that you're, the training that we're doing. It is all the underpinning of the why. How do we support all of the learners that are sitting in our classrooms every day that come to us with so many different experiences and situations? And it, it really provides that kind of support for teachers and connects all of the dots. That's really the feedback that we're getting. I will tell you that the teachers, uh, who attended the training last week said it, you know, by far was some of the best work that they had done and it made all of the other things that we're doing kind of pull together and make a lot of sense to them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and I, that's why, it just seems like that's so important and it does, it affects so many children. So, I think it's important that we make sure that we have the, the resources that we need for that and that it seems like a lot of these issues would be addressed in that type of training. So, that's why I, you know, I think we have to, to look at that and to make sure we have enough funding for, for that also.
I, I would agree with you that they certainly complement each other. I don't know that it would meet all of the, you know, all of the things that define what cultural competency is and I will defer to Dr. Coleman King because she really is the expert in that content area, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Norman? Probably you need to just hold tight, Ms. Massey.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I guess I have a questions for Dr. King, if, if that's okay.
Okay, yes, sir, certainly.
Hey, thank you, Dr. King. You've, you've heard the commentary and you've, you've probably read most of the stuff that we've received, I'm, I'm assuming. Do you have access to the same emails and evaluations, the survey, all that stuff?
I have access to, um, some of the survey information from Knox County. UT also does its own survey and so we have, um, survey, our own survey results as well.
Okay, well, good. And, and so if you've seen our survey, you know that, that we see the same things, mostly positive comments, a few negatives. Uh, there's, and within the commentary, there were places that were, um, maybe, uh, particular points that would, uh, I mean, if I was in the program, I would pay particular attention to. Say, for example, there's an issue, somebody brings a question. And, and several times, one of the comments was, we, I addressed a que, this is hypothetical, I addressed a question to the presenter and the presenter would not, she would not respond, he would not respond to the question. So, obviously, that's a sore point for, for people that are at the, that are in these, uh, in these sessions. There's, there's several items like that, that are kind of, you know, not, I mean, they're not game stoppers, but they're things that if I was in the program, I'd go, well, we need to address this, blah, blah, blah. Okay, if the vote goes forward and you all are approved to go forward in the next year, well, how, how are you going to incorporate the, the criticisms that, that, that are, that are coming out in these?
So, I want to say a couple of things. Um, we have changed the name of the training. It's on all of our slides. We crossed out cultural competency and we put cultural humility. So it is cultural humility training. So I just wanted to, to say that. I will say that we look at all of the feedback and meet regularly and discuss ways to, um, strengthen, um, the program. I'll also say that the scores that we received are really high, especially given the content. This is generally very difficult work to do and I think it speaks very highly of the work that my team is doing, that we've received, received scores of three point seven to four point five. Um, this work is also being done, um, in other states for seven million dollars and twenty-one million dollars. So, other folks are doing cultural competency training. In situations where, we've had situations in trainings where people have asked questions and have been asked to follow up after the session. We have a lot of material to cover in a short span of time and we cannot always get to everybody's questions. The reason why we have so much content to cover is in part logistics. We can only do professional development days. We were given a, a call that asked us to address specific things and we're trying to get through all of it. So we can't always answer all of the questions. Um, and so the, the way that we've dealt with that is, please come and talk to me after. Here's my contact information. If you want to follow up, we can continue this conversation. So, um, so there has to be a balance. Yes, we do answer questions, but we can't answer questions to the extent that we don't get through our presentation and our materials.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and many of the comments, by the way, were very positive about the presenters, very engaging, very informative, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, obviously, there was, there was a lot of positive stuff from this. But I, I really do appreciate Ms. Satterfield's comments when she was talking before, that there is some, you know, as we go forward, if we're going forward with this, there's, you know, there's an attempt to, to look at everything and address some of the issues that, that are obvious.
And I will say, I think too, in talking about, um, Phase Two, I think Phase Two is the meat of where this really gets important because all schools have different issues that they're addressing. This first year was to get us all on the same page with these really big ideas, most of which are based in research, almost entirely, right? To get us on board with the language that we can move forward with the conversation and then go to each individual school and say, what are the challenges you all are dealing with at your particular school? What can we do to support you around those specific needs? For some schools, it might be, uh, socioeconomic status. For some schools, it might be cultural differences between teachers and students and that's not something that ACE is really grapples with. You know, when a student says something or acts a particular way, if we're not from that cultural background, we might perceive it in a way that it wasn't meant. So how do we negotiate those kinds of cultural tensions in the classroom spaces? And again, that's not something that ACE deals with, thinking about immigrant status, thinking about language and the, and, and some of those things that cause tensions in schools. And it's really because we're from different backgrounds. It's a, it's a way to try to get to understand one another and work well together.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few, a few comments and, and, uh, questions. What did you say you're renaming this?
Cultural humility. And this is from a body of literature. So we didn't make up the name cultural competency. Knox County didn't make up the name cultural competency. This comes from a body of research and literature around developing cultural competency. This is something people are doing across fields. It's being done in nursing, it's being done in business. This is not something that is new. However, there's also new research that talks about the fact that we're never completely culturally competent. We're always learning culture. Culture shifts and changes, right? If I go back to my hometown now, I'm sure the culture is very different than when I grew up there twenty years ago. And so cultural humility means that we're just taking the stance of learning and getting to know people better and recognizing that my experience is not your experience and so I want to get to know your experience better so I can be a better teacher for you. It does not imply that teachers are not, do not have humility, right? That's not, but it's taking a stance. And so I think that if we're taking a stance to say, I'm always learning, I think that's something we want from teachers, to be lifelong learners, that's the stance. And so I think we can, we can take terms and kind of define them in different ways, but based on the literature and the way the people who have coined the frame have defined it, cultural humility is taking a learning stance towards getting to know changing cultures within the context of, of schools.
So, did I understand you to say that four, about forty-five hundred of our, um, folks have been trained? Is that correct?
Yes.
And what, what is the, what does the timeline look like to complete the training for the first round?
I think April is when we'll wrap up, um, the full-day trainings. I don't think we have on schedule the half-day trainings, which are for, um, some of the other staff, like our, you know, cafeteria staff. I think those folks still have, have yet to, to be trained. But for, for, um, teachers and other members, um, April. And then we, we're supposed to have a series of half-day trainings and moving into our cultural competency learning communities where we're working with individual schools.
The, um, the subject of a, a, a name change, um, it, it, it troubles me greatly, I will tell you. Um, uh, number one, the, the recommendation of the task force was not for cultural humility training, it was for competency training. But you can call a horse a horse all day long. In the end, it's still, it's still the same bag of feed that it's coming, that it's eating out of. Is that correct?
Well, we wanted people to approach, the, the, the material hasn't changed, but we recognize that the comp, the connotation with competency can be negative. And so we wanted to talk through the disposition that we want folks to assume when engaging in this work.
Um, Ms. Bounce, I appreciate very much your comments about the, um, making it a, um, voluntary as opposed to mandatory. Um, I, I guess my, uh, concern there, which, uh, just as a comment, uh, would, would be the cost involved if, if the pricing for a contract would still be the same or not and that's something we, we just can't know. But, um, I, I heard, I heard, um, like Ms. Horn, more about this these last, um, couple of months than I've probably come close to hearing about anything. I do appreciate that the evaluations appeared to be, uh, leaning toward the, the more positive. I, I don't, I don't know what to do with that because the comments that I received, not only through emails, but, um, calls that I got after the presentation from some of the schools in Knox County, um, I, I heard a little bit more of what Mr. McMillan was saying as far as a kind of, um, the insinuation and, and insisting that, that you don't get it, kind of, kind of scenario, which, uh, again, that may have come to the present, been more about the presenter. I can't know because I wasn't in those specific, those specific trainings. Um, Mr. Mc, uh, um, uh, Mr. Dugler, I have a question about, um, the status of the contract that we currently have. Am I clear, this is for one year?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, when, when you all had voted on this particular contract last year, uh, the, the basic answer is yes. I mean, it, it's, it's from year to year. It's my understanding, it's a multi-year program, as has been discussed, but it is from year to year and, um, that's the reason it's coming up again, uh, this year because it is up for renewal for, uh, the next year.
All right. When you say up for renewal, when does this current contract terminate?
Um, I'd have to take a look at the, I believe it's on the agenda. I can, I can take a look at it real, real quick, but.
All right.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the, the agenda indicates December two thousand seventeen, but I'll, but I'll verify the exact date.
Two thousand eighteen?
Two thousand eighteen, correct, yes.
All right, all right. Um, so with this first round that we have already paid, this one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, will that get everyone through the first round?
That's through the end of year.
All right. And, and so the rest of the folks that need to be trained, uh, or at least with the first round, if it continues, would be through the rest of this school year? Is that how that's scheduled?
I'm not sure. For the, for the teachers, but not the, the other classified staff or non-classified?
Madam Chair, I, I apologize, but I mean, I, yes, I verified the contract is actually the last day of the year, so it, so it expires December thirty-first of this year.
Mr. Superintendent, I, I would actually like to hear from you about this, what your, uh, thoughts, thoughts are about this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, um, back, I'll refer back to, I guess, when I first sought out this job, that, uh, we talked about three priorities and increased student achievement, building a positive culture and eliminating disparities. And part of the elimination of disparities included, uh, some cultural competency training, uh, maybe cultural awareness is a better word than competence or, or humility, uh, whatever the word is. I mean, we've got students who come from different cultures, different backgrounds. Uh, I, I think it behooves us to do everything we can do to train our folks to have a better understanding of where our kids come from. I think it helps us to have a better understanding of, of each other. Um, you know, I'll just say this, the Bible talks about that. So, uh, from the standpoint, and I'm not trying to bring religion into this, but, uh, the fact is that we, we, we treat each other with respect, we seek to understand each other. Uh, I'll say this, you know, my evaluation wasn't even a three point seven and I got a year, um, on, on my contract. So, um, and I've been real pleased with a three point seven, so, this year. But, um, so I, I think we need to give it, uh, you know, another year just to, to get through all the training and, and I'm, I'm telling you, I don't care what kind of training we provide, not everybody's going to be happy. Um, I can't say that I was happy with all the training, uh, that I received, but, uh, so when you've got, uh, eight thousand people that you're trying to train, that, you know, there's going to be. so when you've got 8,000 people that you're trying to train, you know, there's going to be some that, that are not going to be happy about it. And so I think you have to look overall at the results, and if they're, if they're positive, then I think that, that shows that it's, you know, that it's being affected. But, you know, I had some reservations initially, but I, I think back to myself and, you know, how I think about other people and, and people from other cultures and, and I don't see how we don't benefit from that better understanding and, and those conversations. So, I know the board's going to do what the board's going to do, but we've invested, you know, a year into this, and we've talked with the disparities in educational outcomes. You know, we talked about doing this and, and fulfilling this commitment. So, from my recommendation, it would be, I would love to see the board, you know, approve this for, for another year. So that's, that's my, my position. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Superintendent Thomas. I think we owe it to the task force and the 4,500 teachers that gave it high reviews to give it another shot, given that the implementations that, the feedback that was presented. But I do think that if the board decides not to move forward, that's sending a strong message to the task force and to our teachers who are telling us that we, they need this in a sense, so.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield, and Ms. Bounce.
Yes, wait a minute, I had a question. I'm just kind of perplexed. I guess it's okay, but knowing that the board was going to review this year by year, why we would not have all of our people trained under that first year's umbrella? And, and that's kind of troubling that we would have teachers that are untrained if the contract expires December 31st. But my question was to you, Ms. Horn raised the question. Do we have any idea what the salary, I know you don't maybe know the person, but what will the salary be for this additional staff member that's going to oversee?
There's, there's not one additional staff member.
Okay.
The budget stays the same. We're taking on, I think it's an additional 11 people, so that each person would be assigned a number of schools. There are about 90 schools in the district, so each person would be assigned a number of schools.
Okay.
And so we'll be working collaboratively to, to determine the needs and then, based on expertise, work with those schools in supporting them.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies that.
What, what are going to be the qualifications of these 11 people?
All of the people have been listed in the, in the proposal that we submitted. Most of these people are also people who are at the University of Tennessee, who also do work in education around issues relative to cultural, cultural responsiveness, cultural humility, cultural competence.
So these, these, this personnel is not students?
No.
They are all UT employees?
Yes.
All right. Any more questions, comments? I'm going to ask for a roll call vote then, beginning District One.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Bounce?
No.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
No.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
That is six yes votes and three no votes.
Motion carries. I think it's very clear from the conversation, though, that there's a lot of reservation in this, and I'm, I'm trusting that you all will take things that have been said to heart, perhaps look at some changes with, I don't know, maybe some of your staffing. I hope you do individual evaluations on your trainers, because I, I do believe it was pinpointed to, to a couple of specific trainers. And this may not be appropriate to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. I hope you will reconsider the name change that you're looking at for, for that. I find cultural humility just to be hard to swallow. I would much rather be trained to be competent than to look at humility.
Item 13A, accept charter monitoring report for Emerald Academy.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Sattersfield, second by Norman. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
13B, approve the renaming of Lincoln Park Technology and Trade Center to Lincoln Park Center.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Owen and Norman. Discussion. Motion to approve? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
13C, approve resolution of the Knox County Board of Education to surplus parcel of property formerly known as Thorn Grove Elementary School.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, McMillan and Norman. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
13D, approve certified retirement incentive plan.
So moved.
Approved by Norman, second by Satterfield. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Horn?
Madam Chair, we have one speaker for public forum on this topic, Tanya Coats.
Thank you. Tanya Coats, President of the Knox County Education Association, Knox County. So, just a couple of questions before, Knox County Education Association did not take a position on this. However, we have had several discussions about this is, could be beneficial for us. But we would like to see the board bring some clarity, or at least, hope that we can work with Mr. Bolton, as we have always done, have had great conversations. But several questions have been, arise from this. So, there were four documents that were placed out in regards to this incentive program, and most of us know that a lot of adults just don't read a whole bunch of stuff when it comes down to it. So our ask is, is if we can put out a question and answer survey that we can work together so that we can dispel some of these myths, right? So some of them, so one of them is make sure that we have a question and answer one sheet or, or that some of the questions are, some of them that are determined, these questions would be, is this voluntary? I read it, and it said, yes, this is a voluntary process, that no one's going to be made to actually retire. But if we could answer that, how much are people getting paid from this incentive program? It was $344.85, since it was embedded in there, but sometimes people don't get down in the weeds to really see what, what that means. And if there are penalties with this, because some people didn't understand, you know, they were calling me, and I told them, this is not my wheelhouse, this is something, I know that Mr. Bolton got a whole bunch of phone calls from me because I kept telling them, call Scott, because I don't know. But those questions are, if they get a penalty from TCRS, what, what will this mean for them? And then some other people thought that, what if I change my mind? Well, it also stated in the paperwork that if I change my mind, you got until 25th of January. But again, when it's a lot of paperwork, it was four sheets out, some people just look at, oh, this is incentive program. But one reason why we wanted to have this question and answer is dispel the myth about, we're trying to get rid of seasoned teachers or people on the high rating scale, right? I know, you know, and the district knows that we just have financial troubles, right? And we're just trying to find some way to actually bring some reprieve to some teachers. So if we can have some sessions, one of them is if you can have sessions to dispel this myth. Again, this is a voluntary process. I know this, you know this, but if teachers don't hear it, you're just not trying to get rid of them, again, because it's voluntary. And then please, can we provide those sessions in this court, in different quadrants of the district, the northeast, south, south, and west areas? Because if we don't do that, and we just make it centralized at the teacher's center, it's not convenient for folks. So, I know that this is going to come up November the 19th, if it's passed today. I'm not saying if it is, but we're hoping, I, I know that I've had some people that say, please, Jesus, let this happen so that I can retire. And then I said, no, you don't need to retire, we need to keep you, but that's neither here nor there. But make sure that we are, have some clarity and that we're not trying to put teachers off, and that's all we're asking. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Coats.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum on that topic, that item.
Ms. Bab?
Yes, and this might be for Scott Bolton, could I ask a couple of questions? We had talked in some of our discussion about the possibility of adding the steps, and I'm trying to figure out if we are going to know anything about that before teachers have to make a decision. Because I've been having a lot of individual teachers asking me questions, and a few of them, I would be very sorry to hear that they retire. And so I would love the fact that if there's an incentive, maybe for some of them to stay, would be fabulous. And I guess that's one of my, my main questions. Oh, I guess the other one is, a lot of the teachers, you know, very specifically need to know about their situation. I mean, I've had those questions come to me, and I've been like, I, I will not be able to answer that question at all. So I just want to make sure that there is a very clear way for teachers to call and really understand for themselves personally, financially, what this is meaning.
Absolutely. Let me, let me deal with the, the last question first. Madam Chair, the rest of the board, Superintendent, thank you for this opportunity. As far as the last question, my recommendation to those folks that have been identified is to take their time in making that decision. I recommend everybody to call TCRS. We, we've been sending a lot of those phone calls, we've been flooded with those. In addition to that, we also schedule one-on-one meetings so that we could talk about people on an individual basis. You know, I, I've done a lot of retirement meetings, and I go out to a gathering, there's a lot of different people with different circumstances. And we can cast out a broad net, and it doesn't answer all the questions and the specifics to that particular person. So we suggest to those people, encourage those people, to reach out to TCRS and get their formal estimate. Once they receive that formal estimate, meet with us. Now, that goes back to, that's why our period of consideration is so long, so that these things could be given ample opportunity to, to look at all scenarios. The EEOC requires, I think, a 45-day window of consideration. We've extended that to 60, just to make sure that we, we have all of those questions answered. So I, I think Ms. Coats' suggestions were wonderful. I think those are some things that we're going to have, that we will do. And I think looking at quadrants and going out there is, is certainly possible, and that, that will be the next course of action, if it's the pleasure of this, of this board to move forward with this. And then to your, to your fir, to your first question, I'm not for sure. I think those discussions are, are taking place in, in finance. I think as I envision this rolling out, by January the 19th, we'll be able to have a really good discussion about the, the amount of money we can reimburse in salaries. I would like to see that steps, those steps be added to the end of that. I'm recommending that as well. But, but I think that, that, that discussion is for the Finance Department, and I don't want to step on their toes when it, when it comes to that.
Sure. I, I hope that just by the time people have to make a decision, we know one way or the other whether we're going to be able to do that or not.
Absolutely.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see Joe Snyder in the back. Do you have an answer for what the cost of that step increase would be, roughly speaking?
Thank you, Ms. Horn, Madam Chair, board. So, the way that we are approaching that five-step expansion right now would be one year at a time, just because of the, the financial piece to it and the budgetary impact. The first year of it, we're looking at about $500,000 to add a step to our current zero-to-20 scale. As far as, Ms. Bab, your question, I, I believe it's a bigger conversation with Dr. Drummond and NHR and, and Finance in the Superintendent's office as far as the decision on that. We're involved in strategic compensation conversations. So I, I, in my expectation, I don't know if that decision is going to be made honestly prior to the retirement incentive deadline.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Horn, do we have any others signed up for public forum?
Yes, ma'am, we have one person signed up for public forum, Ms. Lauren Davis. Ms. Davis, please state your name and county of residence.
Ma'am, I have a quick question. Can I pass some things out?
Yes. Ms. Coats will probably take it for you. Thank you.
Pull, pull your mic down a little more. We want to be sure and hear you loud and clear.
There you go. And state your name and your county of residence.
Lauren Davis, I am here to represent Knox County. I'm also here to represent Fairgate Intermediate Student Council. Today, I was, I would like to present four-day school weeks. I've heard that you guys are trying to be tight on budget, and this will save you some money. So a simple YouTube search shows many exciting stories about kids who have three-day weekends every weekend. Some kids in Colorado, Oklahoma, New Mexico, and Washington, just to name a few, all of which either have Mondays or Fridays off. In Colorado, half of the school districts have four-day school weeks. In New Mexico, 40% of the school districts have four-day school weeks. All of these school districts have support from their federal government, the state they live in, their principals, and their teachers, along with 90% of parents who agree with the new schedule. Why do so many adults support four-day school weeks? Four-day school weeks draw the best teachers. This extra time also gives teachers more time to plan a lesson. This improves learning experiences. Shorter school weeks save schools millions. At one school, the predicted savings was $158,658, and the actual savings was only $71, but the four-day school weeks ended up saving the whole county $12 million. These savings include electricity, food, and bus expenses such as the lights, computers, bakery, ordering food, and bus maintenance. Even though 22 days are subtracted from the school calendar, the school days are longer and class breaks are shorter. In Colorado, the math scores went up. Many other countries have been doing four-day school weeks for years. France has been doing it this way for 46 years. A shorter school week means kids are more rested and less rambunctious. Jimmy Linderman, school superintendent, Chattanooga, Georgia, Mr. Linderman went on to say that discipline problems have decreased by over 70%. The four-day school week also releases stress, so it makes it easier for students to learn. The attendance rate also went up by many days. I hear that Human Resources is also looking for a way to cut budget. Please consider a four-day school week for budget cuts to improve the education of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, and thank you for representing your, your student council so well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
All right. Thank you, Horn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.